Okay, we're moving on to item number five right now. Before the applicants come up to the table, I'm gonna...I'm sure there are some folks out there who want to speak on this, so we'll let them do that before the applicants come up. It's 245 Washington Avenue, special permit to install a gas regulating station. Section blocking lot is 56.90-6-20, secret determination, Zone R1. It's in Ward 3. Central Hudson Gas &amp; Electric is the applicant owner. Is there anybody wishing to speak on item number five? Alderman Coop, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Douglas Coop. I reside at 149 Main Street. I'm the alderman for the 2nd Ward of the city of Kingston. First thing I want to do is acknowledge and thank the committee for doing what we asked you to do one month ago, that is, to defer the decision on this issue. It's appreciated by the Uptown Community Alliance, which is, in fact, an ad hoc group which is formed to research this project. My purpose tonight is not to present the findings of this group. There are many people here who have done the heavy lifting on this, and we'll talk to you about some of the issues. But I would like to really make mention the fact that this particular location is really at the geometric center of three wards within the city. That's 1/3 of the city of Kingston. The location is in Ward 3, as you well know, but it's very easy to stand at this location, and one could throw a baseball to someone in Ward 1 and Ward 3. My own particular home is located...I've done the math, it's about 85 yards from the facility. I just want to acknowledge and say that suffice it to say that there's a large number of people in the neighborhood that are vociferously against this facility being put in this location, and I therefore ask you, I think it's...I ask you respectfully to deny this request. It's very similar to a situation we had with the...in a common council about a year ago regarding a shooting range located...to be located in the city of Kingston, close to the high school, the YMCA, et cetera. Many people from outside the city were in favor of this, but the neighborhood, the neighborhood people were strongly against it. We voted that down. So I ask you to do likewise and vote this facility down. There are many people, for many reasons that you hear, that are against this facility. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. I think the woman in the red scarf was next here. Does she...or somebody come on up? Yeah. Sir?
This is not something I like to do. And I wanted to thank...
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, Nora Boojak. I'm from the town of Ulster, but our daughter lives in Kingston. I want to thank Doug Coop from Ward 2. He said everything I really wanted to say, with the exception of the thoughts that I have on what's going to happen to property values. I'm extremely concerned about that. We looked all over Ulster County for a property that is we, our daughter, whoops, and my husband and I, and found this lovely old place on Janet Street that needed some work, and decided that, hey, you know, if we could, if we were willing to put forth the effort, it would be a perfect spot for her. So we did, in fact, do that, and have spent many days over the past couple of years trying to make it a nice place to live. And if there had been, I have to be very honest with you, if there had been this Central Hudson facility at the end of Washington and on the corner of Washington and Janet, we would never have considered this house. We wouldn't have considered it at all. And the people in that area are worried about the value of their property, aside from what Central Hudson has said and these people that they had come in from Athens to evaluate it. I don't believe that they even came here nor that they do a true evaluation of the real estate values in that area. I do hope that you look very, very seriously at this. It is on Washington Avenue, and I think that that's Route 32, isn't it? They may call it something different when it goes, but isn't that...
No.
Well, what happens? It's Washington Avenue...
Just Washington Avenue.
Uh-huh. So you take 32, you hit Washington Avenue, and you're not on it anymore?
No, not down that far.
And then what happens at the other end?
At the traffic circle?
I mean, you can take Washington Avenue...
This is not supposed to be an exchange, so you can...have like...
So you don't have to worry about that? I mean, that's not something one would have to worry about because of this thing being installed, perhaps?
That's in the eye of the beholder, ma'am. This is not...this is a public hearing. It's not an exchange, a conversation between this board and the speakers.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not used to doing this, so...there's that, and like I said, the...I think that that pretty much does it, because I read the mission statement for the Realtor, and Central Hudson did, of course, say that they monitored the performance of natural gas regulatory stations, and that they have a remarkable response order notification, more than 75% of the calls notifying Central Hudson of a potential leak are responded to within 30 minutes, and then, in less than 30 minutes or less. More than 99% of the calls are responded to within an hour. That was kind of shocking to me, because it seems to me if you have a leak, you should have someone there, like, in less than 30 minutes. I had a very emotional experience in that I had close family friends, one was blown out of their cellar and the other, and killed, and the other one was very seriously injured. So this is emotional for me, and I felt as if I should come before you and at least speak my part.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm following up on that in terms of the...
Can you state your name and address, please, sir?
My name is Ken Istrum, and my family and I live at 10 Janet Street, which is directly across the lot at 245 Washington, where Central Hudson is seeking a special permit to install a gas regulating station. At the September 18 meeting of the planning board, several residents raised concerns regarding the impact of the project on property values. This letter, my letter, is in response to the memo written by the Hudson River Appraisal Group dated September 25, which Central Hudson provided to the public in response to those concerns. Property values may change based on any number of factors that are not directly under the control of the property owner and that are external to the property itself. These factors are termed external obsolescence, examples including busy roads, landfills, high voltage towers, et cetera. Evaluating how property values may change is a complex multifactorial process and simply cannot account for everything and ends up being an estimation. The most appropriate method for estimating this is a sales comparison or comparative market analysis. You generate data from comparable situations and look at the before and after differences in home value. Statements regarding what may happen to property value that are not based on that kind of data are just opinions. The memo written by the Hudson River Appraisal Group is an opinion. There is no market analysis, and there's no data to support their conclusion. Therefore, the memo does not reflect a good faith effort on the part of Hudson, or Central Hudson, to actually address any of our concerns. I want to specifically address one comment made in that memo, as I believe it reflects the attitude Central Hudson has towards this process, and this is a quote from that original memo. "As the gas line is already in place at the site and through the neighborhood, any effect on property values should already have been realized. The proposed improvements are only changes to an existing condition, not the installation of a new one. Although this statement suggests that there's already a gas line on the lot, there isn't, as indicated in the plans provided to the public by Central Hudson. The gas line that is to connect to this station is currently running under Janet Street. So not only does this memo not contain any actual market analysis regarding property impact, it is factually incorrect. Further, to state that the brand-new construction of an above-ground gas regulator station is not new is bewildering and intentionally misleading. Installing a gas regulator on a main thoroughfare is not consistent with the community character of the neighborhood and more broadly the uptown area of Kingston, and in my opinion, it will negatively impact property values. In sum, I request that the planning board charged with protecting health, safety, environmental well-being, and property values of Kingston residents deny the special permit. At that point, the planning board, Kingston residents, and Central Hudson can work together to identify a more appropriate site. I want to emphasize that Central Hudson has not adequately demonstrated that this station is absolutely necessary or pressing. As indicated in their own response to our community concerns, they have considered five separate sites for this station over the last 20 years. Given this, it seems clear that the need for a new gas regulating station is not immediate. Lastly, the cost of this facility and under, and other infrastructural projects is being used as justification by Central Hudson as it seeks approval for rate hikes from the Public Service Commission. Thus, not only is my family facing and other families facing the possibility of having a gas regulating station outside our front door, we'll also have to pay for it while Central Hudson increases its profits. I have this written up. If you would...
You can just hand it to Mr. Jacobson over here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
My name is Ann Derr. I'm the owner of 15...
Bring that microphone down to you there. There you go.
Hi. Oh, it's a little wobbly.
Oh, you broke it now, didn't you?
Is that adequate?
I'm just kidding.
Is that adequate?
You can take it right out of the holder if you want to.
All right, let's try this. My name is Ann Derr. I'm the owner of 15 Janet Street, and if the committee will permit, I'm going to request a little extra time. My name is Ann. Two minutes from two additional neighbors, because I'm just playing catch-up here. This is my first time at this meeting. Our property is immediately adjacent to the 245 Washington site. We share the lot line on Janet Street, and I do urge the planning board to slow down and either delay or deny this permit. I find the materials and explanations provided to date by Central Hudson unsatisfactory to allay economic, environmental, health, and safety concerns. We, my family, are new members of the Kingston community. Before we signed contracts to purchase 15 Janet, we researched Kingston. We read the comprehensive plan. We did extensive research in the Hudson Valley and decided to commit to the Kingston community. We only found out about the substation proposal just days before we were scheduled to close, and it gave us pause, but we had really little recourse to, on our deal. In the short time we are, we've been here in Kingston, we have found this community to be welcoming, smart, and diverse, and just a wonderful community at the corner of Washington and Janet. The proposed gas station would be out of character with the residential neighborhood, which is adjacent to the historic Stockade District. While I support the need for infrastructure upgrades, the proposed gas substation location seems ill-fitting with the principles outlined in the city's comprehensive plan. For example, historic and cultural resources of the city must be strongly protected and leveraged to maximize the extent to attract residences, residents, businesses, and tourism, thereby creating and promoting economic development. And goal number two, which is to promote maintenance and improvement of existing stable neighborhoods outside of the mixed-use cores. The proposed gas substation is not in keeping with the historical and residential area and presents economic and health hazards. A Realtor named Norm Werner, who contributes to Realty Times, speaks extensively about the idea of stigma associated with gas regulator stations. He recently published an article in which he states, "Some stigmas are caused by very real circumstances. Homes located next to power substations or gas pipelines and substations carry with them the stigma of fears and dangers from explosions or lightning strikes. Not everyone is frightened off by those stigmas, but enough people are dissuaded to impact the values negatively. So we, as the newest investors on Janet Street and residents, are really concerned about the impact on our property value. The installation of the facility directly next to our property will have a negative impact on our ability to market our rental property, because we have a rental unit on that property, as well as it will diminish the value of our home. We are concerned about the deleterious health effects on our family and those of our tenants. The gas regulator will sit directly below the windows of our residential apartments and those of our tenants. The residential bedroom windows will be approximately 25 feet from the regulator pipes and whatever might emit from those pipes, such as methane, gas, and other VOCs. Central Hudson's published specifications for natural gas regulator installation state in section 8.3, and I'll submit this for your review. Regulator shall not be located directly underneath windows or other building openings." And I cite this, you know, the location of that in this document. So it would seem that that prohibition should extend even more greatly, this is, sorry, that relates to new installations of regulators on residential property, but it would seem to me that that prohibition should extend even more greatly, even with more gravity, to gas regulator substation facility outside a residential property. I've also included in my documents a research study from the EPA, which was a study on emissions traveling from regulator stations, and where they use sampling, and it shows how that, those emissions are dispersed and how far they spread. So even in, as someone else recently said, in 30 minutes or one hour, you know, a release of gas could be floating right into the windows where children live, my children, the children of our tenants, you know. I don't feel that this has been adequately, these questions have been adequately answered. Any emissions from the regulator would certainly travel into our property's windows and would have a direct impact. I already said that. Or it's super innocent, they'll skip over that. Thank you for being patient with me. Also, there's a recently published article by researchers at University of Albany for the World Health Organization, which covers compressor stations in New York State, and it talks by volume, the largest emissions are NO2, carbon monoxide, and VOCs, formaldehyde, particulate matter, you know, exposure to these chemicals can exacerbate respiratory and cardiovascular disease, neurological and developmental diseases. You know, I have a rental apartment I'm considering renting to someone with a two-month-old baby. In all good faith, can I rent to them? I'm putting this on public record, you know, I really want to rent to them. They're a lovely couple, but what, you know, I have to feel like I have a moral obligation, and I feel like the board has a moral obligation to consider these things. In addition to the emissions, we're also concerned about the nuisance of noise generated by the above-ground regulator beneath our windows. Central Hudson says the anticipated noise level at the sidewalk would be less than 30 decibels. If you look at the rendering of the plan, the regulator is really close to our property. It's been pushed back off of Washington to kind of make it discreet to the public, and yet it's been put right abutting our property. So if it's 30 decibels at the sidewalk, what, you know, 30 decibels of continuous noise at night has the power to disrupt sleep patterns in the elderly and young, and can cause other issues. Skip a little, but...so I'd like to know, and I think the community has the right to know, what's the exact composition of the gas that will be released? How frequently will the gas be released? What will be done to present asthma, respiratory, and other ailments? Will a 24-hour monitor sampling the air be able to handle the effects of even short-term exposure to our residents and our neighbors? How will the carbon scrubbers resolve these concerns that Central Hudson has proposed? I also would like to know, given the size of the lot, if this is the only location, was an underground facility even considered? The EPA report, which I cite in here, states that regulating stations involved have significantly lower emission rates than those of above-ground regulating stations at the same inlet pressure. So in Central Hudson's response, I think it could go on and on, to the, to the idea of people smoking near the site, they put up a sign that says, "No Smoking." I pick up cigarette butts off our sidewalk, people walk back and forth to the convenience station, people smoke as they walk along the street. I think the sign is not going to be particularly effective. So, you know, the members of this Uptown Community Alliance are willing to work with the planning board and Central Hudson to explore alternative locations. You know, planning board, fellow residents here, I really urge you to think, would you want this above-ground regulator next to your property and underneath the windows of your home? I really think you probably would not. So I hope that you will give the appropriate time and consideration to this idea of installing the regulator at this location, because, you know, there's just long-term health and property value impacts that will last a long time into the future. So I urge you to delay, deny, give consideration to our comments here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you, Robert?
Good evening.
Hi there.
My name is Christopher Leveki, and I live at 22 Janet Street with my wife Andrea and our three-month-old son Simon. We own our house, which is located across the street and approximately 200 feet from the site of the proposed gas regulating station at 245 Washington Avenue. The comments by the other speakers tonight reflect my sentiments, so I'm going to focus my comments on environmental testing. While the application submitted to the planning board includes, by Central Hudson, includes letters regarding the potential archaeological and ecological impacts of the project in terms of species, endangered or threatened species, it is unclear whether Central Hudson has performed adequate testing on the site to determine any levels of hazardous waste that may impact water quality. The site was once the location of an apartment building that burned and was razed and buried in place, and it is unclear whether there are hazardous materials that would be disturbed in the construction of the facility, potentially affecting ground and surface water quality. Furthermore, the application makes no indication of what impact the proposed facility would have on air quality as a result of the release of gas as part of the facility's regular operations. It is unclear to me whether this project constitutes a Type 1 or Type 2 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR. Type 2 actions, as you well know, are exempt from review, but according to section 617.5B1 of the act, in order to be a Type 2 action, the action must be, must quote, "In no case have a significant adverse impact on the environment based on the criteria contained in section 617.7C of this part." Section 617.7C 1 sub I includes, quote, "A substantial adverse change in existing air quality, ground or surface water quality," as one of the criteria for significance. I believe this project may have a significant adverse impact on ground and surface water quality and air quality. Yet Central Hudson's application materials made no reference to any tests or specifications that address these concerns, and would have cleared this project as Type 2 under these sections of SECR. The apparent disregard for potential impacts on air and water quality suggests to me that Central Hudson is not being a good corporate citizen. I request that the planning board charged with protecting the environmental well-being of Kingston residents either delay any decision-making until more studies can be done on the site, or deny the special permit. I further ask that the City of Kingston Planning Board give a little more time to investigate whether the proposed project actually constitutes a Type 1 or a Type 2 action under SECR. Thank you.
Thank you. Better hurry.
Good evening. My name is Reno Budziak. I live in the town of Ulster. While I don't live in the city of Kingston, my daughter Brandy Budziak has recently purchased a owner-occupied duplex at 29-31 Janet. I would like to give you individual copies of my testimony, so that you can read along with my reading. During the September 19 session of the planning board, the board delayed action on Central Hudson's application for a special use permit, pending Central Hudson's response to comments made and questions raised by the public during this and previous public hearings. While in its October 5, 2017, letter, Central Hudson selectively responded to some issues raised during the hearings. Some responses are rhetorical in nature and lack substance and detail. Central Hudson has an obligation to respond to all the testimonies submitted for the record, and the board has an obligation to, to the community to secure responses for the purpose of making informed decisions. Of particular importance is the question of justification of need and site selection. As was stated during the last public hearing, according to zoning law section 405-91, the board's approval of a special use permit is predicated on, quote, "The planning board's determination that there is no other reasonable location in a less restricted district that can be utilized for the purpose," unquote. In Central Hudson's response letter, references made that only five potential sites were evaluated in the last 27 years. Consequently, the elapsed time span would be indicative of the fact that a replacement of higher-capacit regulator station is a discretionary consideration and not an essential requirement, given that there have been no recorded service disruptions and safety hazards. Furthermore, the proposed site was on the market for five years, and yet Central Hudson did not make a purchase commitment until the beginning of this year. There is no compelling evidence of strategic need, and the board must not make a knee-jerk determination at this point, but must, in collaboration with the city and Central Hudson, take an active role in comprehensively evaluating alternative and less restricted sites. There are a number of possible alternative considerations, such as use of city-owned vacant lots, combined use of Central Hudson-owned properties, and specifically, a commercially-zoned property at 381-385 Washington Avenue. Additionally, in its October 5 response letter, Central Hudson touted itself as being, quote, "Sensitive to the needs of the neighbors as well as the needs of the community at large," unquote. If Central Hudson was truly sincere in its sensitivities, it would not make a recently-announced request for a confiscatory combined 30% rate increase for gas and electric service, in addition to destroying the character of residential neighborhoods. This increase is on top of Central Hudson's rates, which are already the fourth highest in the contiguous United States, and has contributed to termination of service to many of its customers who can't afford the existing rates. By the way, Central Hudson cut off the service to 11,000 residents, and it's criminal that these people who have financial hardship be subjected to that kind of inconvenience. 11,000 people, and if this rate is increased, that number will skyrocket astronomically. Their actions will only benefit its shareholders and not its served customers. We ask the board to best serve the needs of its constituency and deny Central Hudson's application for a special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Nancy Graham, and I live at 133 Pearl, which is a few yards from 145 Washington, in a 19th-century house built by the poet Henry Abbey on local color. The comments by the other speakers tonight reflect my sentiments on this issue. I just want to reiterate a remark that Reno just made. The board can require Central Hudson to explore moving the substation to a more suitable, less densely inhabited district. And again, to reiterate, Kingston zoning law section 4059B, the special permit can only be granted if, quote, "The planning board determines that there is no other reasonable location in a less restricted district that can be utilized for the purpose," end quote. Fortis boasts $48 billion in assets. Surely they can afford to move the substation to a less densely populated commercial or industrial location, examples of which exist within blocks of the Emerson Street site. Members of the Uptown Kingston Community Alliance, again to reiterate, are eager to work with the planning board and Central Hudson to explore alternative locations for the siting of this substation. In consideration of the population density and historic character of this neighborhood and the possibility of acceptable sites more remote from where adults and children live and play, I respectfully request that the planning board deny the special permit or delay this decision and call for the requested economic and environmental impact studies. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi there.
Can you hear me? My name is Andrea Gavsky. I live at 22 Janet Street with my husband and my three-month-old son. We live across the street and about four houses down from the site at 245 Washington Avenue, and we walk by it multiple times a day as we walk our dog, go, walk to the Stockade District for work, and run various errands. I'd just like to say the comments made by all these other speakers reflect my sentiments as well. There may be some repetition in my own. We moved to Janet Street two and a half years ago. I spent two years walking the streets of Uptown, scoping out the potential homes to buy. My husband and I fell in love with Janet Street because of the strong neighborhood feel. Janet has a diverse mixture of residents from long-term residents to new arrivals... These kids play in the front yards and run around. So discussions about gas emissions, smells, humming noises, all of these are of extreme concern to me as a parent and to many other people on our street, not to mention the potential for other more significant impacts on our environment that we haven't really been sufficiently informed what shouldn't be concerns. Even the impact on traffic flow is of concern to me, both during construction and at any time they may need to make repairs. We already have enough, hard enough time turning off of our street onto Washington as it is. There are high school students who catch a bus right next to the site. There are many people who spend time walking up and down, somebody you mentioned, to the corner, to the convenience store up the road. We're also concerned about our property values. I confess that if the substation had existed there already, or if I knew that this was going to happen, I would have seriously reconsidered buying our house. I've talked to many others on our road and elsewhere in Kingston who have said similarly. Despite Central Hudson's claims that the landscaping will obscure the station from view, looking at similar structures elsewhere in the city and in the Hudson Valley suggests to me that it's difficult to have these convincingly. And while the current proposal shows the station taking up a few, only a small amount of the lot, it is extremely close to the houses that abut it, and any future expansion would obviously exacerbate any dangers that already exist. I support Central Hudson's desire to upgrade their infrastructure, but there's absolutely no reason why this proposed station should be located in such a densely populated residential area. The other comparable sites that they mentioned to us in their initial proposal of other sites they have in the city are in areas of significantly lower residential density. This proposed project conflicts with principles set out in the city's comprehensive plan, which states that the city must protect historical and cultural resources and must promote maintenance and improvement of existing stable neighborhoods outside of mixed-use cores. This city and even this area is filled with sites that would be much more suitable for this new structure. In conclusion, I request the Planning Board honor its duty to protect our health, safety, environmental well-being, and property values. Please delay any decision-making until more studies are done to determine the substation's potential impact on our neighborhood. This is a significant change to the infrastructure of our neighborhood, and the decision should not be so rushed. Conducting studies would allow Central Hudson to ensure the safety of the project for local residents and would obviously make us feel much better. Further, the members of the Uptown Kingston Community Alliance are willing to work with the Planning Board and with Central Hudson to explore alternative locations. If a decision must be made tonight, I request that you deny the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Malika. I live and own 238 Washington Avenue. That property has been in my family since 1952. My concern is Central Hudson had said that they looked for other property for 20 years, and that property at Janet and Washington has been for sale for over 20 years. My other concern would be the release of gas. I guess they had mentioned that the picket fence and the shrubs would take care of that problem. I don't believe that. And I just request that the Board would prolong it or even deny it.
Thank you, Mr. Malika.
Hi, I'm Filippo Godad. I live at 127 Pearl Street. My friend and neighbor came and gave me her two minutes, so I'll take four minutes. The edge of my property is diagonally across the street from the lot at 245 Washington Avenue. The comments by the other speakers from the Uptown Kingston Community Alliance tonight reflect my sentiments on this issue. To save the Board time, I will focus solely on the topic of safety. This substation is being proposed for a busy corner in a densely-packed residential neighborhood. Between the size of the substation and the neighborhood density, there is no comparison in the city. When the Emerson Street station was built in 1937, the city was less dense and little was known about the ill effects from seating a gas-emitting structure next to homes. The site is located in a district zone R1, one-family residence. According to zoning law 405-32, a special permit is intended to, quote, "take into consideration the public health, safety, and welfare. The Planning Board charged with this task should proceed with careful consideration as many lives are at stake." In their, quote, "response to public concerns document," Central Hudson stated that the corporation will post signs on fences indicating that smoking or open lights are not allowed within the fenced area of the gas regulator station. This signage will be an inadequate way of ensuring, in their words, this, quote, "requirement" that no open flames, cigarettes, et cetera, will enter the area. There are currently no trespassing signs posted on the property, and people regularly walk on the lot and they smoke. How will this safety, quote, "requirement" be enforced to ensure public safety? We would like more specific details. As for violations, Central Hudson's letter stated that the leak-detection equipment that was not calibrated were spare devices and the service regulators that lacked inspection documentation were inspected but not documented. These appear to be convenient excuses, but I am inclined to believe the regulatory agency. The Public Service Commission's 2013 audit found numerous violations. Central Hudson contested a number of those with the PSC, stating that the classification of the severity of offenses should be downgraded, but not that the violations did not occur. Various violations existed related to their gas equipment, which included occurrences of lack of regular inspection of equipment for atmospheric corrosion, supposed to be done every three years, one of which, one of many, was not done for over five years. Other cases were of relief valves set higher than their allowances. The list of violations is too extensive to cite all of them, so I'm going to present it with my testimony for the Board to consider. Natural gas lines and stations explode in our country every year. According to the United States Department of Transportation Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, in 2016, there were 636 incidents, 16 fatalities, and 88 injuries due to natural gas infrastructure incidents. Examples of explosions of gas regulator substations and pipelines can be found in the news as they are numerous. The causes vary from cars being driven into the substations by drunk drivers, to lightning strikes, to icing of equipment, to the wrong types of pipes being used. All cases result in devastating injuries, loss of life, and property. These become increasingly more dangerous when the gas substations are placed in high-density residential areas. Due to the high traffic, both foot and automobile, and the amount of people who live within 500 feet of the proposed site, this location is wrong for the gas substation. The seating of this gas regulator station does not appear to align with the city's comprehensive plan and our community's character. I ask the Planning Board either to delay the decision until an in-depth health, safety, and environmental analysis can be done, or deny the special permit. Members of the Uptown Kingston Community Alliance are willing to work with the Planning Board and Central Hudson to explore alternate locations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we get a copy of that? Uh huh, yeah.
The petition, does she, does she, can she enter the petition into the public comment?
Yes.
Is that what your question is?
No, you don't have to read it, but you can submit it. Yeah. Yes, please.
Matt Dunn.
Well, how are you?
Good. How are you doing today?
I'm glad these, these microphones work for you.
I thought you would have changed them while you were in office before.
We tried. My name's Matt Dunn. I live at 159 Main Street, on the corner of Main and Lafayette, just a few more yards than Alderman and Doug Coop. Live right around the corner from where the proposed regulator station is. My, my, my youngest has the joy of playing with Professor Nicefrom's child, who lives right across the street, and we bike constantly down Washington Avenue to GW to take my youngest to school. So we have certainly deep connections or connections to that area. I, I'm not going to repeat a lot of the things that have already been repeated, but clearly we're all concerned about the environmental impacts, the impacts on our family, and also the impacts, the economic impacts to our, to our homes and to what, which we've invested in. We know that Central Hudson has not always been a good corporate citizen. Certainly, they, they've had this regulator for decades, and they haven't upgraded in decades. We also know that Central Hudson had the city's streetlights, and the city invested $500,000 to purchase those streetlights, even though they could have upgraded them to LEDs, and they didn't do so, therefore costing taxpayers a ton more money due to their inefficiencies. So there are certainly concerns about Central Hudson's ability and willingness to maintain and take care of this property according to our community's standards. I think, more importantly, I, I think it's important that we work together to try to find a solution. Certainly, we want an upgrade to the gas regulator. We know the other one's outdated, and it makes sense. We want, all want infrastructure upgrades, and we need this, given how the, how ancient this current regulator is. Certainly, Central Hudson could go about and propose new places, and citizens could respond, and you could respond. Citizens could respond, or provide potential alternative locations. Central Hudson could respond. You could navigate a process where, 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 well, look, if there's these other locations. Alternatively, which I think is frankly the best one, that we could all work together to try to find a solution that, that meets both Central Hudson's needs within its regulations, meets the citizens' needs, and also meets the city's needs, whether it's the government and the Planning Board. That would, would be consistent with Central Hudson's commitment, as they say on their website, "They're committed to serving their customers and their communities." That means us. If they're truly interested in that, they will work with the citizens along the Washington Avenue corridor, the, work with the, with the City of Kingston, and you, to find the best location for this gas regulator. That, especially in today's contentious age, will allow for some consensus building, and it's certainly, I think, the best option. And in that situation, everyone wins. So, thank you. I'd ask that, for whatever the process is forward, to allow that consensus building to move forward, whether it's the denial of the permit, postpone it, whatever it may be, but to allow that process to occur. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I like your point.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
My name's Adam Mastropalo. I live at 125 Pearl Street.
I'm sorry, can you speak up a little?
Adam Mastropalo, 125 Pearl Street.
Thank you.
I had a question for the Board, actually, which is, what is a classification under SECRA, and why?
It's considered an unlisted action. It's, the SECRA law, again, we're not getting into a back-and-forth here, but the SECRA law sets forth a list of type-one actions and type-two actions. Type-one actions automatically require a coordinated review and potentially an environmental impact statement. Type-two actions have been predetermined by the New York, by New York State to not have an environmental impact. Any other action that is not specifically listed is considered what they call "unlisted," and then it becomes a action of the agency to determine the level of review that becomes required.
Thank you. I guess I was wondering why that determination was made, given the potential adverse environmental impact and the changes of the community character.
So this is not going to be an exchange with the Board here. You can, you can certainly allay your concerns or how the secret process works and, you know, let, let us know how your feelings on that. It's probably, that'll be part of the public record.
Okay, thank you. Okay. To me, it just does seem that it certainly does change the, the character of the community. Again, it's perhaps redundant with everyone's feelings, which I think what everyone said was pretty well in line, but to have that in a residential historical district, you know, all these houses in this area largely built in 1890, you know, and people have worked really hard. When I say people, I mean the community, being, you know, the business members of Uptown, you know, the city itself, nonprofits, artists, and residents have all, you know, put in a lot of effort and work and money into, you know, having Kingston on this rise right now. And it's kind of a slap in the face to those people who've done all that work to sit this right next to their investments. You know, there was a house on the corner of Main and Washington that, just a few years ago, was vacant and abandoned for many years. Somebody came in, they fixed it up, and it sold for over $300,000, right? And that's happening all over our neighborhood. You know, my wife and I have invested tons of time and money into our house to try and do the same thing, and to have this come up across the street, it's devastating, you know? It's taken us 10, 15 years to get where we are, and the economy's finally turning around, and then we have this next to it. So I urge the Planning Board to deny this based on it not meeting the community character. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lynn Rittenhouse, and I live on Linderman Avenue. So I'm not, I'm nearby, but not around right on where this is going to take place. But I really question, why does this have to be in a residential area? Aren't there some commercial areas that they can put this? Every time I go down Emerson Street and I see that god-awful, monstrous thing by that person's house, I say to myself, "I wouldn't want to live here." So of course it's going to affect people's resale value. And I really think that they, you know, they need to find a better spot, and it shouldn't be in a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Valeria Georgiou. I'm a, I'm a former resident of Kingston and neighbor. I live in Carhanks in New York.
Can, I'm sorry, can you repeat your name again? It wasn't in the mic.
My name is Valeria Georgiou. I'm a former resident of Kingston. I live in Carhanks in New York. I am active with various citizens groups concerned about the increase of hydro-fracking gas infrastructure across New York State in contravention of the Cuomo-stated plans to reduce carbon emissions. So I strongly urge the Planning Board to consider demanding a full environmental impact statement based on the new information disclosed by Central Hudson and the concerns that these community members have raised.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on item number five. We'll have the applicants come up, please.